Welcome to the regular scheduled public meeting of the zoning board of appeals. We'll have an invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Would you please bow your heads. Lord, how wonderfully blessed and thankful we are for these moments we have together, Lord. We ask right now that you would bless the city of Shreveport, our mayor, and all of the entities thereof. Bless us as we go forward to make the right decision concerning the business at hand. We thank you for all that you are in our lives. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Welcome to the regular scheduled public meeting of the zoning board of appeals of the Shreveport Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comment on an application, we have comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. When you come forward to speak, please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear the first from applicant and then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, the members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decision on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 after 1:00 PM tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcattlempc.com. All ZBA board decisions on cases within the city limits of Shreveport are subject to appeal to district court. All ZBA decisions on parish cases are subject to appeal to the parish commission. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact either district court or the parish administrator's office about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the ZBA is in session. The zoning board of appeals values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. All right, we have minutes from November the 20th.
I move that the minutes be accepted as granted.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Pearson, second by Mr. Moss. Let's vote. And motion carries. Okay, first case on the agenda, case number 19-320-BAC, which is an appeal. Digivision?
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Arsenault, 333 Texas Street, Suite 700, Shreveport, Louisiana. I represent Digivision. We were here last month, and I think you got most of the things that are there. The property was rezoned. It was not rezoned for purposes only of having a billboard. There was a site plan submitted with it. There's been a new site plan submitted. The owner intends to go forward with building. So all the assumptions are simply now absolutely proved to be wrong. And the applicant is entitled to a billboard permit for this site. There's no requirement of law that there be construction. There's no requirement of law that there be a site plan approved. There's no requirement of law that there be building permits for something other than the billboard, for the billboard to be here. Anything other than that is an overreach of the authority of this board, or the MPC, or its staff. For that reason, we respectfully request, for the same reasons we made the arguments last month, that this decision by Mr. Jordan, who does a great job, he's just wrong in this case, that the permit be issued. It's interesting that the opposition to this, which has no standing, they don't have, they don't own the property. They, all they're doing is trying to prevent a little small competitor from competing with them. And yet, they're the gorilla in the woods here. And so they want to pound on my little client to make sure that my little client cannot build a permit, a build a billboard that it is entitled to build under the law in effect at the time the permit was applied for. This is not a variance. This is not a special exception use. He's simply asking to be entitled to do what the law permits him to do. I do agree with one thing that Lamar says in his letter. It says, "Every billboard operator must abide by the rules as written." That's right. My client is abiding by the rules as written. And here's the corollary to that. When the rules are written, every billboard operator is entitled to rely on those rules to get a permit where they're entitled to it. My client is entitled to permit. We ask you to reverse the decision of the zoning administrator. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I do have a question. My question is, why are you doing this backwards in requesting for a billboard without building prior to?
There's no requirement. They're not doing backwards. The current law permits you to do either one. So there isn't an order. That order is being dictated by the staff. It's not being dictated by the UDC.
But I'm asking, what's the reason for?
Because the billboard could be put up first, and there are a lot more difficulties in getting the site plan and the building permit approved. It's a difficult site for a building. That's because it's a small site.
So because it's a difficult site for a building, you're just gonna put a billboard there and not a building?
No, ma'am. She asked why one in front of the other. I said it's easier to get the permit to erect the billboard than it is to get all the parking and the layout for the building.
So are, so do you intend to put a building there?
Ms. Pearson, my client doesn't own the property.
So is that no?
No, ma'am. But I cannot speak for the owner. The owner, the owner has rezoned the property, spent a whole lot of money on me to rezon the property, by the way. The owner of the property submitted a site plan with that rezoning, got a permit for access from the Department of Transportation Development, which they could not get without commercial zoning, and now has submitted a site plan. So there is no indication that they don't intend to build a building.
Do you have, does your client have, well, not Digivision, well, I can just ask her if she has an approved site plan?
She submitted, she submitted a preliminary site plan with her rezoning, and they submitted a site plan for approval yesterday.
It has been approved?
No, ma'am. It's been submitted for approval.
Oh, okay, okay.
But there's no requirement. You are not the people who decide about a site plan. The staff is the people who decide a site plan. The site plan is not necessary for the billboard permit. You would be imposing a new requirement that you're not entitled to impose to deny this permit and not to, not to reverse the decision of the administrator. Any other questions?
Do y'all have a timeline on when the building is going to be built?
Again, I'm not y'all. My client doesn't own the land. My client isn't responsible for building the building. My client has a lease, will have a lease for the, for the billboard and wants to construct the billboard, and then the building will have to account for the billboard. The site plan submitted, by the way, the site plan submitted yesterday does account for the billboard, and the, it causes a alignment of the building so that the billboard does not go over the building, so that it will comply with the requirements. But there is no requirement in the current law to have a building or to have evidence of a building being constructed. There is none. Everything else is an assumption that has no basis in fact. When people say, "I'd rather go to Bossier," your denial of this permit will be Exhibit A. Thank you.
Is there anyone else speaking for case number 19-320-BAC?
Yes, sir. Stephen Keen, 2512 Swan Lake Road, Bossier City, Louisiana, 7111. I'm the managing partner of Digivision. And I'd just like to start by saying, I'm a Shreveport native. I was born in Shumpert Hospital before it was torn down. Since the 1920s, all of my family has graduated from Byrd High School. In 98, I was a Shreveport Chamber Small Business of the Year. And I have developed three subdivisions, 400 homes, 24,000 square feet of, of commercial property. And today, I employ 13 people at Digivision. So I am the exact definition of a locally owned and operated business and property owner. And I feel like I should be supported by the city and not unfairly impeded. And my desire is just to grow my business and, and hopefully see Shreveport grow and prosper as well. But apparently, I wasn't at the last meeting, at the last meeting, one of our competitors whined that I was able to get a ground lease on this site that they had failed to get one on years ago or something. Well, the competitor has not listed any appropriate or objective reason to oppose us. They have not mentioned anything about public safety, aesthetics, sign clutter, public concern. Their only objection is that I'm gonna get an extra billboard. I'll have, I have eight right now, so I could have 10, and they have over 1,000 billboards. So it's a Goliath and David thing that they're here. But anyway, and I've never spoken against any competitor's efforts to grow their business. And I feel like these guys should be ashamed of what they're doing, but nonetheless, what's, what's most important is that the staff has invented rules of their own to go into the UDC. There, there are no statutes, there are no sections, there are no paragraphs, there are no words in the UDC that affect this billboard permit at this site at this time. So it's a, it's a mystery. Tom has already said, in the UDC, there's no waiting period after rezoning. There's no requirement of construction after rezoning. There's-
Your three minutes are up.
So to end, I'd just like to say that the UDC, if not modified, has to agree with our permit. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Question for you, Steve. If the site isn't developed, wouldn't it be conceived that the property was rezoned for the sole purpose of constructing a billboard?
Absolutely not. I can't control that, and you guys can't control the timing of a developer, a third-party developer. If they were to go bankrupt before they built it, how would I be impacted by that? So I can't control that. I feel certain that they're going to proceed, and because I'll get to, if we follow the law, I will get to put the billboard up before them, before they build, because the process, and I'd like for one of you guys to tell the, the board what you see as the normal timeline to get a site plan completely approved, and, and then all the construction plans, the irrigation plan, the retention plan, the landscape plan, the driveway permit, et cetera, et cetera, to issue a building permit. What is that, what is that minimum timeframe?
Well, actually, we've had some of those situations where they've gone through the PAC meeting, they get everything together. When they submit it to us, and we can turn it around and, and as far as our approval in a couple of weeks, they can go on the permit and they go right on down. It just depends. It's, 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 there's not a hard, fast answer, because also, it depends on cooperation of the applicant of making, taking care of all the issues that are on the plans. There's really not a way to answer that definitively, how long it's gonna take. Sometimes it's very short, sometimes it's long. It depends on a myriad of factors.
So since I've done it numerous times myself, I'm gonna say, Mr. Moss, I think you asked that question, or Robert, you did, that six months is, is a good timeframe for all the submittals, also to the state. And you also, we will have to go to the, or the developer will have to go to the levy, the levy board. So that's another process. But anyway, I'd like to say that you guys allowed Ace Billboards to put up a billboard on a vacant piece of property with no construction in September of this year at 7107 Line Avenue. So where is all the, we, we have to have proof of construction and site plan approval and everything before you put up a billboard, because he just got that location approved and put that billboard up. So if you deny this, what about that one? Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else speaking for case number 19-320-BAC appeal? There are none. Anyone speaking against case number 19-320-BAC appeal?
Good afternoon. Keith Berry, 4033 Pinewood Street, Benton, Louisiana, 71006. Apologize, I'm kind of a little beside myself right now, and awfully offended that every time we come in here, Mr. Arsenault either calls us a bear, or a gorilla, or whatever other names he wants to call us. And that's, that's really offensive to me, and I, and I just want to put that on record. And also, I want to clear up a few things. Steve said that, you know, for whatever reason, we went through the process or whatever he, he thinks we did to try to get this, this lease and this permit, and that we did not. That is not what happened. Couple of years ago, we, we talked to the landowner that was there. We actually instructed him, as interpreted by the MPC, and that how it was interpreted to us, that in order to get a billboard permit there, that you have to be able to build a business there, and that he would be able to build a business. He had to build it. It had to be constructed. As it's written in the ordinance, it says, "No property may be rezoned to one of the permitted, allowed districts for the sole purpose of allowing an erecting or erecting a static or a digital billboard." I ask you, how do you interpret that? If it's zoned, if it, if it's first zoned, and then there's a billboard built, then there was no, the interpretation has to be that that, that piece of property was zoned for the strict purpose of a billboard. What's the hurry? If they're gonna build it, if they're going through the process, build the building, build the billboard. They just said that it's gonna be a difficult site to build. That's been repeated in here by Mr. Arsenault. It's a difficult site. How much more difficult is it gonna be to figure out if there's a billboard on there? Right? So once again, we talked to this landowner years ago, and we told him exactly what was, had, had to happen. We said, "We cannot get a permit. We didn't even submit a permit, because this is the way it's been interpreted." This is the way it's been interpreted all across the country. This is the reason that all across the country that this ordinance is in there, they're having to get, get more strict and more strict on it. You could find billboards all through Louisiana and all through the United States that people have gone and rezoned for the purpose of a billboard, said, "Hey, here's the, here's, here's some plans we drew up, didn't have approved site plans, didn't have the building starting to build." Never happens. The billboard's sitting there, the building is, that nothing's ever built. I can give firsthand account from one in Lake Charles, that was the exact same way. And all we ask, he could say, "We're the gorilla," or "We have no dog in this hunt," whatever it is that he's saying. All we're asking is everybody played by the same rules. That's all we're asking. You know, we played by these rules. We have played by these rules. And because Mr. Arsenault and them, they, they find a loophole to where they can say, "Oh, we can go get this zoned, and then we can get the billboard," but there's no building there. So if you interpret these rules, how else do you interpret it? That you can't build a billboard before there's a building. There's no other interpretation on this. All I ask is that, and I implore you to look at what's going on. You understand what's happening here. They rezoned the property for the strict purpose of building a billboard, and it's illegal. So our, our whole point, and yes, do we not want a billboard there? Absolutely not. It's straight across the street from one of mine. But that has nothing to do with it. What it has to do with is the rules and regulations that's set forth by the UDC and interpreted by the MPC. That's why they turned down the permit in the first place, because it doesn't meet their interpretation. And if it doesn't meet their interpretation, it shouldn't be overturned. So that's where we stand. Y'all have any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is anyone else speaking against case number 19-320-BAC appeal? Okay, there's none. What do I hear from the board? You have a rebuttal, sir? All right. If you notice, there's a little clock right up here.
I've been under my time both times, Mr. Hendricks.
And I appreciate that.
And I think I will be again, sir. My client is not trying to take, take advantage of any loophole. He's trying to apply for a permit to which he is entitled on the, under the existing law. Under the guise of interpretation, the staff is trying to add requirements that are not in the existing ordinance. In fact, they're adding requirements that are in proposed ordinance, but that's not law yet, which is clearly why, clearly why you should reverse the decision. First of all, this will be the only one you'll have to deal with like this, because other ones will have to meet these requirements. There's no evidence. Lamar objects to my characterization that they are the big kid on the block. I use a different term. I think that Ms. Sartori should object to Lamar's characterization and the staff's interpretation that Ms. Sartori is a liar, because that's what they're calling her. I think she's entitled to be, to assume that she's going to do what she says she's going to do. There's no legal requirement that stands in the way of this permit. As business people, as representatives of the community, you should not rewrite the law. Thank you. I'm glad to answer any other questions. Minute thirty, Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Clark?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have the legal representative of the Metropolitan Planning Commission here, and I asked him to come so he could direct you in the process and what exactly type decision you'd be making today. So you would allow him to make some comments at this time before you deliberate.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
If you will come to the podium, sir.
Richard John, I'm attorney for, General Counsel for the MPC. What Mr. Clark wanted me to make sure-
State your address as well.
Oh, 3646 Yuri Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. Mr. Clark just wanted me to make sure y'all understood the position this case is in. I think it's pretty obvious, and, and, but he just wanted me to make sure that, you know, understand this. This is being appealed from a staff decision. The interpretation of staff decision is being appealed to y'all. And if, you know, the staff was basing their decision based upon how they've been doing this in the past, if it, if y'all overturn it, then it's done. If you uphold it, then it can be appealed to the district court. And, and it will go for that process. Was there anything else you want me to add?
I just wanted to make certain that in the intent of being fair and honest at this proceeding, that this board understood exactly what was before them, and nothing else. Was the appeal of the decision by the zoning administrator. And that's all.
All right. Any questions?
No, sir.
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else on the panel? All right, what do I hear?
Mr. Chair, I, the staff recommended that we overturn the zoning board's administrative and executive director administrative decision and approve the appeal with these conditions. That they submit a site plan. It must be approved, meeting all the requirements from the city engineering, fire prevention, LA DOTD, and MPC. And all necessary building permits for the approval site plan must be issued, and evidence of an active construction on the site must, in other words, you know, like a concrete slab or something. Do I need to give a, in a certain amount of time?
Six months.
In at least six months, within six months.
Right. Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Pearson, second by Mr. Moss. Let's vote.
You don't need a discussion, Mr. Chairman. Just making sure that that was up.
All right, motion carries.
So that decision is that the zoning administrator's decision is overturned with those stipulations?
Yes, sir. Okay, that brings us to the end of our public hearing. We open the old business? It's gonna be our new business. Any new business? All right, we need to put officers in place again for the year 2020.
You got a nominating committee?
Yeah, I had a nominating committee to do that. Are you guys prepared to give your recommendations? Yeah, I'm pretty sure the person that you're gonna put into place, they want to be able to accept it.
Yeah, the nominating, just, just a little insight, but, Mr. Chair, the nominating committee makes its nomination, and someone wants to make another nomination from the floor, that can happen.
Are you speaking to Mike, too, when you?
Oh, okay.
Are you guys prepared at this time to do that? Are you guys prepared at this time to do that?
To do, go back.
To give your recommendations for officers?
Recommendation for, for officers. Really need to get him going, because we got to go into a new year of office. Right, correct.
Correct.
My recommendations are to keep it like it is.
What happened to the-
Second that. Okay.
I'm sorry I was talking, I apologize.
State that motion again.
My recommendation is that we keep the, keep it like it is.
And I second that.
Okay. And that's Mr. Gerwood as chair.
Gerwood as chair, and Allen.
Yeah.
And Allen, vice chair.
Vice chair.
And who's the secretary?
Ms. Pearson, secretary.
Ms. Pearson, okay. Just so that's on the record.
Okay. Is there any discussion at this time, or any? All right.
It's been moved and seconded already.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded? Is that your actual motion, or just a recommendation?
It was a motion, wasn't it? It was your motion, right?
It was a motion.
It was a motion.
Okay. It's moved and seconded. Let us vote. All right, motion carries. Any other new business at this time from the staff, or? Yes, sir.
There's something that's on my mind. It's a time to speak about. Well, just talking to a business owner here in Shreveport, and I just had some concerns. I was talking to Mr. Woods about his building over there off of Lakeshore, and he was telling me about the Church's Chicken that's right across the street, that's vacant. And he looked at trying to get that place to perhaps open it back up, a food chain or something. And they told him he could get it, but it couldn't be a food chain because of competition. And I guess somewhere along the line, when some of these businesses come in, and they leave these buildings abandoned, you know, that turns into an eyesore. And somewhere in the future, I wonder if we could put something together where we can make them more accountable for those properties, because they're not keeping them up. You know, they board them up, and they're eyesores in these communities. Just not, just not their buildings, other buildings around Shreveport, so.
You're talking about a deed restriction? Is that what's holding the guy back from?
Well, I guess they own the building. I guess they own the property, and he wants to purchase it, or he wants to-
But they won't let him do food.
They won't let him do food.
I've seen that myself. It was an abandoned building for twelve years. But they had deed restrictions, so you were free to buy it, as long as you agreed to these terms. It was unfortunate for other businesses that wanted to do the same model, that you abandoned or not, if you wanted to purchase it, you had to.
And I guess, I guess, when you're doing business, when new companies come in and do business with us, is there something we can have in place for them to say, "Hey, once you leave that building, even though you own that building, we, so he won't sit there and, 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 uh, rot. What are you gonna do to keep it up?" Or you need to be open to, to other businesses moving in there. And I guess-
I just share real briefly with you, we've discussed this, this matter in length, and we're working toward coming up with some recommendations to deal with abandoned buildings. If you remember, one of the drug companies, I think it was Rite Aid, shut down, and at every location that they were at, it was a vacant building. An abandoned building. And when buildings become abandoned, other things start happening that become instant truck parking sites, instant, we were having problems with food trucks-
Food trucks.
-sites and so forth.
Yours is.
And all kind of other negative things that happen. So that's one of the things that is on the top of our agenda for 2020, coming up with recommendations for ordinances to deal with buildings that are abandoned. Some municipalities require that they are demolished after a certain point, if they're not occupied. And those are some of the things that we will be discussing in 2020. But you're absolutely right, and I agree wholeheartedly with you. It happens, and it happens more and more, and it's amazing, all the vacant buildings, abandoned buildings we have over the city of Shreveport. And if you have ordinance in place like that, that might encourage a property owner to either lease it or sell it to someone else, as opposed to losing it.
Okay. All right. Anything else from the board? All right, we have the matter of approving a resolution.
And all that was, was that in order for us to get credit for your attending the planning commissioner's training, that you attended at the Skybox on a Saturday, it had to have been approved as accepted training by the board. So if you will just vote to approve this as acceptable training, that will take care of that.
I make a motion that we approve this as acceptable training for the board.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Moss, and seconded by Mr. Balkum. And the motion carries. All right, Mr. Direct, you have any comments, or have you given them already?
I just have, just a couple more things. Real, real, very quickly, I know that it was a special effort for you today, and just, and I know that it goes without saying, but it is strongly appreciated that you made the arrangements to attend this meeting. Mr. Balkum was opening his, his new business endeavor, and I called him because we were a little concerned about having a courtroom, and he did, went through that process and came to this meeting, and I just wanna personally thank him for doing this.
You're welcome.
We never wanna turn the public away, because we don't have a courtroom to address their businesses, their issues and so forth. We're preparing for the Strong Town Meeting, January 10, 2020. We're in final preparations for that. Emily is working with the Strong Town Representatives, and this is a meeting where we'll be talking about annexation, and how towns become stronger towns, how they develop, why they should develop in certain ways, some things that you may be very much interested in. This retreat will be held at Samstown, and it's gonna be basically from nine to 12 on that Friday. And hopefully, you can put on your calendars and arrange to be able to come. It's gonna be very informative, and it's a whole lot of interesting information that, that you will be able to get from it. I was on the phone with Charles Ron before, came in the room, in the conference room with you, so they're very excited about coming down and providing you with that information.
What day is this again, sir?
January 10.
10.
And could this qualify also for hours for the year, for next year?
What kind of hours?
See, the continuing education?
You can call it continuing education. What, what do you, 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 and I'm glad you said that, because there are a couple of you who've not done the ethics training. And the ethics training has to be completed, and you will do it each year regardless to what else you go to. The ethics training must be completed before December 31st, 2019. So if you would, Emily will be more than happy to assist you in getting to the website. It's, you can do it at your own convenience, you can do it in different settings, but it's important that you get that done within the next couple of weeks.
To answer your question, yes, it is continuing education, but it's not anything that's a requirement to do, but was strongly encouraged that you do it, because it would really help you inform decisions as you move forward in the year.
Okay.
And I need to just say that one of the, one of the recommendations by the city council, just, just real quickly, the process works that the mayor submits a budget to the city council, and the city council can either approve, object, amend the budget. One of the concerns that the city council has was that the MPC boards, that's the MPC board and the zoning board of appeals, has as much additional training as possibly can be provided for them. And the city council added additional funding in order for that training to be provided. So there will be other opportunities, is like Mr. Dean said, you're not getting credit units, but there will be additional opportunities for us to provide you with all of the information you possibly can gain, to assist you in doing the job that you perform for the city and the parish. And lastly, I know he has a very busy schedule, I wanna thank the MPC attorney, Mr. Rick John, for coming and providing the assistance sometime. We've asked in the past to, from the parish and the city, to have an attorney come to your meetings, but that has not gone very well. But it's important that in cases like this, where there may be possible additional litigation, that we have legal representation to guide you and direct you in decision and the processes that you go through. So I wanted to just thank him. And lastly, once again, I wanna just wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a very safe Christmas. Please don't do like me, eat too much, but have a wonderful time and see all of you in 2020.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Merry Christmas. And that brings us to the end of our meeting.